So it looks like we're ready to go. Katner, are you good to go? Okay. So on the agenda, the first item is a call to order welcome and roll call. And I see that Michael, Vicki, and Heidi are not present. I know that Heidi had family matters in Spokane. And I know Michael had been traveling and I'm not sure about Vicki.
I haven't heard.
So anyway, so we're missing three trustees, Elizabeth. And so now we will stand and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So item number three is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. And as was noticed up previously, there's also an addendum, item number 7A5, that I think everyone has seen and has been noticed up publicly as well. Is there any requests to revise the agenda? Seeing none, then we'll move ahead as it is listed. So number four is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting from June 13th, 2017. Are there any corrections? Trustee Wake? Oh, okay. Any corrections first before I entertain a motion to approve them? Seeing none, then is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by trustee Wake. Is there a second? Second by trustee Newbold. And all trustees in favor of approving the regular meeting minutes from June 13th, 2017, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to trustees present. Then we move on to 5A, which is public comment regarding non-agenda items. And we ask everyone who wants to make a comment on non-agenda items to limit their comments to three minutes. These are comments on items that aren't going to be discussed later in the agenda. And therefore, it's an item that you want to bring to the attention of the district that falls underneath the jurisdiction of the district. And if appropriate, then we will add it on to an agenda item on a later time where we can actually discuss it. But because it hasn't been noticed to the public, there won't be any board discussion. And trustee Beers is here. So if you want to come to the podium, is there any comment on non-agenda items? And if you have an unusual spelling of your first or last name, and if you represent an organization, if you can identify that organization, otherwise just hit that little button to turn on the red light.
Hi, I'm Ian Knight. I'm a rising senior at Hellgate High School and have been a member of Save, which is Students Against Violating the Environment, all three years at high school. And I just want to thank you first for letting me come speak again on zero waste in the school district. And today, I'm just going to talk about my experience at Save and at high school and throughout MCPS. So for the past two years, I've been the head of recycling at my school, leading recycling, organizing it, helping with payments for the school. And every year, I see many incoming students who are really excited to join Save because they see it as a goodwill program and something they care deeply about, but often end up halfway through the year leaving because they feel disappointed because they don't really have much support and they don't see it as important by many people in their schools who don't have opportunities like Save. And when that happens, that kind of creates a cultural mindset in the school that those programs are important. And since Save is out of the way, that's often the only education opportunity for students, especially in high school, because they didn't receive that in their elementary or middle schools either. And also, one of the ways that happens in the school is one of the examples is through the recycling not being paid for. So that leads students to having to go out of the way to recycle and feel it important. And they see their colleagues and their peers seeing it as non-important. So they also lead them to not care about it either. And one of the daily occurrences that it becomes a norm is through the use of styrofoam as a packaging material in the cafeteria. It not only leaks toxic chemicals into food, but also never decomposes over time. And for students who don't have the educational opportunities as a save from going out of the way, they see this as something normal as they go on to graduate from high school and they go in their careers and post-secondary education, such as universities, without really knowing much about environmental impact. So I just kind of came here to talk about what my experience has been through Save, through the school district, and zero waste. And I'd just like to ask the school for support on programs such as Save and other environmental programs. And looking towards the Missoula Zero Waste Goal that was passed last year in February as a possible, as something to look at, to strive for as a 21st century district. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I indicated, there won't be any board discussion, but if it's something that needs attention in the future, we can add it on as an agenda item. Is there any more public comment on non-agenda items?
Hi, my name is Alexa Holliday, and I am the Zero Waste Educator at Home Resource. This year, I taught the Zero Waste Ambassadors Program, ZWAP, a fifth-grade waste reduction program through Home Resource. It was a great experience because I found that Missoula's fifth graders want to be zero waste ambassadors. They want to reduce, reuse, recycle, spread the word about reducing waste, and they understand the importance of keeping stuff out of the landfill. During ZWAP, students have the opportunity to learn why it is important to make a difference by changing the way they live their lives. And I sense that it is empowering for them. They learn that their small changes can make a big difference. It will strengthen and support these concepts when MCPS adopts a zero-waste goal. Having schools that align with the city's zero-waste plan will make it easy for students to make the choices they care about. This means having recycling and composting accessible for them in the lunchroom and classrooms. When the school develops these systems, it will give MCPS students a real-life practice that is congruent with the ZWAP curriculum. Students will have the opportunity to be empowered and educated on what is going on in their community while Missoula moves forward with the 0x50 pathway to zero waste. They will then be able to see how their school fits into this larger puzzle. As a part of the ZWAP program, I asked the students how old they will be in 2050, the year Missoula is estimated to divert 90% of its waste from the landfill. In this exercise, they do the math, and the fifth-grade students find that they will be in their mid-40s. I asked them to raise their hands if that is exciting to them to be able to grow up in a city that figures out how to keep most stuff out of the landfill. There's always an overwhelming majority of kids with bright eyes and hands held high. During the community listening sessions, over 150 citizens of Missoula agreed that educating the public on zero waste is essential and a top priority in moving towards zero waste. A zero-waste MCPS will give Missoula's students the skills to be able to reduce, reuse, and recycle as they grow up as prepared and engaged citizens for Missoula's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items?
Hello. My name is Kimberly Carlson, and I've been working at Hellgate Cafeteria for the past two years. I'm an embedded foodie behind the scenes. A short background of myself, I've worked in the food industry for a long time, from high-end restaurants, produced a successful cooking show out of Los Angeles. I've written some cookbooks, things like that. And at this phase of my life, I'm very interested in institutional food organizations. So I chose to work at Hellgate High to see how a large part of the real food industry works. So it's interested me a lot. With recycling and sustainability in mind, I wanted to speak with you about the choices I feel will help the school district move into the 21st century. Or at the very least, I want to encourage you to please consider mandating the use of reusable food serving items, example bowls, cutlery, plates, et cetera, and to remove the use of styrofoam from our school district. Mandating the end of the use of styrofoam is a practical and very, very doable first step. The use of styrofoam is really appalling and outdated. Styrofoam never biodegrades. 500 years to never is the most generous estimate they give. It consists of toxic chemicals that leach out into these containers, from the containers into the food. And it's composed of benzene and styrene. Both are known human carcinogens. A lot of you may know this. It crumbles into fragments, persisting on the land indefinitely as litter and breaking up into pieces that choke and clog animal digestive systems and waterways. And the product takes up more space in landfills than does paper and eventually will re-enter the environment when the landfills are breached by water or mechanical forces. So it's there. I've asked the MCPS Food Service Department why we use so much styrofoam and so much plastic. And the reply I get is the alternatives are too expensive. And I also feel it's not anyone's priority on the ground. They have a lot of issues they're dealing with. So their growing number of alternative containers and products available that are made with recycled, sustainable materials. And I'm sure these vendors out there, are vendors out there who would love to competitive supply this large contract that MCPS have. I think eight thousand students. I think we could get some good bids on all this. And I'm wondering if we could piggyback some of the competitive bids with the university on things like that. I'm aware of the costs they're attached are higher, but I believe they certainly outweigh the toxicity and the landfill issues. From the front lines in the kitchen and actually seeing how the food is prepared and served, I really feel that without much effort, we could make a big difference. The goodwill in the Saved program is a great start, but there feels like a big disconnect between the realities of feeding the student population and the dreams of recycling versus the reality of the Hellgate Kitchen. I see it happening. Partly because of the fact that high school students can eat off campus, do. And there's a disconnect between the kids that leave the campus and the kids that actually have to use the cafeteria because of their financial situations. And so I believe sustainable business, business of the recycle, it is the business of the 21st century. It's not politics. It's a smart business. So I would ask you, as a school board body, if you can be comfortable, if you're comfortable that your community and your students are using containers that never disintegrate and also release harmful chemicals into the human population, into the landfill and waterways. Plus, I wish you to please consider to try to, I'd like you to mandate end of the use of styrofoam. Plus, I think the headlines, "MCPS Bans Use of Styrofoam", will look very good in the paper. It's an easy one. I think it's a win-win for everyone. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non-agenda items?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Jeremy Drake, and I'm Community Engagement Manager at Home Resource. I stand before you tonight in recognition, really in awe of the power of this governing body to make decisions that can impact the lives of thousands of children every year. Thousands of children and their families, and by extension, a large portion of the community of Missoula. Now, I know that you know that with power comes responsibility. And I know that you know that your responsibility as trustees, priority number one is the education of the children in this district. Let's talk for a moment about education and learning and where it happens in a school or in a district. There's the learning that takes place in the classroom, the three Rs of education, if you will. And that's essential, right? It's the foundation of our educational system. And then there's the learning that takes place, maybe even more, as essential learning, maybe even more so, that takes place elsewhere. And that's the social learning. It's what kids learn from each other. And it's what they learn from the social norms that are woven into the fabric of the culture of a school or of a school district. And this is where I believe MCPS has a tremendous opportunity to impact the education of students today for an uncertain tomorrow. While no one has a crystal ball, anyone would be hard-pressed to argue that being good stewards of the planet will result in undesirable outcomes in our future. There's a lot of ways to be a good steward of the environment, of the earth. And I submit to you that one of the easiest, most cost-effective, and most doable ways is to reduce our waste stream. That means cutting back on the amount of resources it takes to educate Missoula's youth. And it means putting the policies and systems in place to make sure that the resources we do use don't end up in the landfill. You know the city of Missoula has a zero-waste goal. It can't get there without you. Missoula can't get to zero waste without MCPS striving toward that same goal. I want to thank Superintendent Thane for his leadership in supporting the vision of a zero-waste MCPS. He gets it. That's why he's committed to get MCPS on the path to zero waste. And Home Resource is committed to helping. That's why together, this fall, Home Resource and MCPS will co-host an Energy Corps service member. Alexa is our current Energy Corps service member. Whose job will be to continue to educate the kids of Missoula about, through our Zero Waste Educator, Zero Waste Ambassadors Program, ZWAP, which is the sound of knocking out waste in Missoula, by the way. ZWAP! And to draft a zero-waste plan for the school district and to pilot zero-waste initiatives at Franklin Elementary School with staff and faculty who are motivated to make Franklin the district's first zero-waste school. So in closing, I ask that you join Superintendent Thane in supporting the vision of a zero-waste MCPS and in supporting the good work that it will take to get us there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other?
I also have a little handout to share with you all about some of the stuff that we talked about today. Who should I give it to?
If you want to hand it to the end of the table.
End of the table?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, before we move ahead, Burley, is there any way to get some air circulation in here? It's a little hot. Or is it, are we? Yeah, just a little air movement, I think, would help.
Yeah, all this is your waste talk.
Yeah. Thanks.
Zero oxygen.
Thank you. The old-fashioned air conditioner. So now we move on to item 5B is correspondence. There is written correspondence on page 15 in the packet. 6A is the high school activity reports for the spring and year-end 2016-2017. These are the high school activity reports for 2016-2017, and there will be no oral report. And we move on to 6B, which are announcements from Superintendent Thane.
And I will be very brief this evening. We are in full swing with summer hours. Offices are open 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, in the administration building as well as our high school offices. We are scheduled for our next regular board meeting Tuesday, August 8th, at 6:00 PM in this room. But there will be a variation in the August schedule. Because of statutory requirements for budget adoption, we will have a special board meeting that will convene Thursday, August 17th, at 6:00 PM, also in this room. You'll notice listed on page 22 in the packet is also the regular board meeting slated for Tuesday, August 22nd. However, we intend to cancel that if in fact, we can complete budget adoption on the 17th of August. So tentatively plan on the 8th and the 17th. Thank you.
Thanks. You have a question? I asked Mark a question. Sure.
Actually, Mark, you might need to do a quorum check well ahead of that, August 17th.
We will.
And maybe, you know.
Okay, now we're on to 6C, which are announcements from trustees. Are there any announcements from any trustees? Trustee Decker?
Thanks. I had the opportunity to have my son recently participate in Camp Invention, which takes place annually here in Missoula and is coordinated in the past by Shirley Lindberg in the gifted program and all the other programs that she coordinates as well. But I just wanted to give kudos to all of the staff that were involved in that program. It's incredibly well organized and serves, I want to say, a couple of hundred children between kindergarten and fifth grade. And then older kids are also there as counselors. It's a national curriculum developed by STEM experts and entrepreneurs and inventors trying to get kids excited about the idea of becoming inventors themselves, thinking outside of the box. And they build amazing contraptions over the course of the whole week. It's, as I said, incredibly well organized. They keep the kids busy from morning till afternoon. It takes place at CS Porter, which is also a neat bridge for elementary school kids to be getting used to the middle school space. So I just wanted to say what a great experience it was and give kudos to the entire staff that was involved.
Thanks. Any other announcements from trustees? Seeing none, then we'll move on to seven, which is new business. A1, which is Smart Schools 2020. And Superintendent Thane, or we'll go straight to Burley, who's going to introduce.
I am a pleasure to have, to have the opportunity to introduce this fine young man, Max Greby, with Leroux Page Warner, who is the principal architect for the Russell Bond project. So he's going to kind of go over a little bit of what we've been doing over the last couple of months. And pretty exciting project. Max?
Okay, well, thank you. Well, thanks for that introduction, Burley. I appreciate it. And board members, thanks for the opportunity to give you a short presentation. Like Burley said, I'm an architect, I work for Leroux Page Warner. And we've been working on the Franklin and Lowell schools, and we're starting work on the Russell Elementary School. I'm sure all of you are familiar with it, so I will just jump in. I just wanted to give you a quick overview of kind of the process that we've been undertaking for the last few months and where we're at currently. So right now... Maybe? Oh, there it goes. Now it's probably going to move too many times. This is a current plan, for those of you that aren't familiar with it. Existing building, we have classrooms off to the east and to the west, and the gym is down to the south. There's a lot of issues associated. We have some site issues that needed to be addressed as part of the bond language. Also, some modular classrooms to the north end of the site, which is the top of the screen. Also, it was part of the bond language to try and get rid of those classrooms. And then the kind of third aspect, major aspect of the project, was to look at updating some of these spaces for 21st century learning. We initially started out, we met with the Education Innovation Team, which was primarily composed of staff members of the Russell community. We also had, Julie was also president. Burley was president for most of those meetings. And then we also had Halting Incorporated, who was also present as the owner's representative. We met probably 16 to 20 times throughout the course of the winter, looking at different options. We went through quite a few different option development schemes, looking at possible solutions to try and tackle the issues that were addressed. We went through quite a few of these, or a few of the rough sketches that we looked at. Finally, we landed on a proposal that looked something like this. So the current design that we have and what we're proposing right now is a series of four small additions around the Russell Elementary School. And these four additions and partial remodels are designed to address the issues that we found during the design charrettes. So up on the north end, the light blue shaded portions, those are the new classroom pods that we've developed. The reason that we chose kind of what we call a dispersed scheme versus a single attachment was we wanted to really try and focus on getting all parts of the school updated instead of just building a new fancy 21st century-enabled wing on one portion of the school and the remainder of the school stayed the same. We really wanted to look for a distributed option that provided some good learning spaces all throughout the school. So this was really the kind of the focus that we landed on. It was what we kind of came up with more of the fairest of options so that everybody got something was really what we were shooting for. So generally, we've got two primary classroom pods up at the north end. You can see three classrooms, and then it's grouped around a central breakout space, the kind of tan portion there that connects to the existing building. We're doing some minor remodel. One of the major issues in the Russell School was bathroom counts. And so a lot of times, coming from recess, coming from, coming from the lunch hour, it was a lot of congestion around the two bathrooms that are there. There's only two bathrooms in the existing Russell. So we're adding some additional bathrooms and some additional entryways to try and relieve some of the congestion that takes place in the hallways. The next major portion was dining. Currently, they have to do dining in the gym spaces. Lunch, as most of you know, spans across two hours. So that's two hours out of a six-hour day that the gym can't be used. So that was really a major issue for them. And so what we really looked at doing was building a common space that would double both as a large activity area for doing large group activities and also would be a dining space so that the gym could run, gym could be used for the entire school day. And the final portion of what we focused on was the front entry. The front entry had a lot of issues associated with sightlines and safety. There's just a single door to come into the school. As soon as somebody walks through that door, they have access to the entire school. Then the receptionist and the front desk person sits across the hallway, so it's difficult for her to be able to do her work and to monitor traffic coming into and going out of the school. So as most of you know, that creates a pretty major safety concern. Also, the entryway is kind of at the end of a long, deep corridor. So what we looked at doing was, we looked at a few different options. But unfortunately, to really bring the entry all the way out to the front of the school created a lot of blocked-off windows and limits a lot of daylight into existing classrooms. So we settled on a halfway option that you can kind of see here on the west end, where we've created a small entry vestibule that's about 10 or 12 feet out from the current entry. And then we moved the receptionist in so that she's right next to the entry. So she'll have a nice sightline out to the majority of the parking lot, and she'll really be able to monitor incoming traffic. And then we'll also have a vestibule there that controls traffic into and out of the school. So it should be a much safer option. And then the final component of what we worked on inside, we worked on, there's some existing outdated locker rooms that are in the gym, and that's kind of down at the very south end of the plan, the kind of shaded part down there as a remodel. Those locker rooms were built with the original facility. Obviously, they're not used anymore. Elementary schools rarely need locker rooms. So we're looking at essentially removing all the fixtures and partitions within that space and doing some light remodeling so that those areas can be used better for storage. And then also, those spaces can be used for some classroom and some minor instruction in there because you do get some nice daylight into those spaces. Some of the other things too, so just to give people a quick... So as you can see, the kind of overall plan there to your left and then to the right is a kind of a concept of what the pods will look like, the two classroom pods. And then from the exterior, the one up in the top right-hand, that's the entry. You can see the improved front entry there. It's much closer to the street and the main entry and gives a lot better view. And then down in the bottom left-hand corner is a view of what the classroom pods will look like. We're really trying to find an architectural style that fits in with the existing facility. Again, we're not looking at doing an update to the entire facility. So we're really trying to make it look like it matches and fits in. So we don't have a sore thumb of a wart of an annex in the future. So hopefully, it will always be called Russell Elementary and not the Russell Elementary Annex in the future. So that's what we're hoping for. We're also working through some site issues right now. There's obviously some site issues associated with drop-off and pickup during the day, bus parking, and those sorts of things. We're still working with the city and getting through those. We've come up with some great options. We think we've settled on an option that works well with the city's requirements and then also what's going to work well for the district and for the students and staff. We've kind of come to a consensus on that just now, and we're going to start working with it and have a final sit-down with the city. So overall, I think the project has been really successful. And I think we've addressed all of the major issues associated with it. And there won't be any modulators on the north end. So does anybody have any questions?
Trustee Smith?
First off, I really like the way that you guys have focused on the real language of the bond, which was the spaces themselves as learning spaces. And I like to see those improvements. One of the things I know about Russell is there's a lot of asphalt.
Yes.
And there's probably not a whole lot of money left over to do much work outside the school. But is there any work out there that's going to facilitate or make that any better?
Yes, absolutely. We are definitely looking at removing a vast majority of the asphalt and taking it back to turf. Especially around the perimeter of the building, directly adjacent to it. As most people know, this building does not have cooling. So you can imagine early spring and late summer, the beginning and the ends of the school year can be a little bit torturous. We don't have the capacity to add cooling to this project. It's just not possible. We're doing a lot of heating and electrical upgrades right now, but cooling is not part of it. But what we're looking at doing, this building was actually really well-designed from an energy and sustainability standpoint. It's got nice, long overhangs on the south side. But one of the issues that works against it is it was paved right up to the existing building. And so you get a lot of heat gain and a lot of heat on that asphalt that radiates back into the building. So part of addressing some of those asphalt site issues, removing the asphalt away from the parking lot, or I'm sorry, away from the perimeter of the playground and returning it to turf. Then we're also looking at some softscape options around the south side to help alleviate some of that heat gain.
Fantastic. And the last question is, are you doing anything with parking? Because I think we, do we use the parking lot adjacent to it? That's like in between the YMCA, and I don't think we own that, do we? Yeah. Is that going to continue, or did you not address?
Yes, that will continue as is, as far as I understand. So we're not doing any additional work that's outside of the scope. So we're not doing any additional work that's outside of the scope. But as far as I understand it, nothing is changing with that agreement.
Okay. Great job. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Max, maybe I'll throw this back at you in the form of question. Timeline?
Yes, I thought that might come up. So right now, what we're shooting for is to start construction as soon as possible. We're not exactly sure what that's going to be. We're hoping to get in the ground, obviously, this fall, and hopefully to get some of the major dirtwork done before the start of school. We'll see how that goes. We'll be, we'll be issuing this project like a lot of other projects in packages, what we call a bid packages. So we're going to issue a foundation and subgrade, which will consist of all the stuff underground for the project, for the new additions, and we'll try to get that out of the way this fall. And then we'll be working on a lot of the framing and things like that through the winter. And then the intention is, is next summer to go in and do the existing remodels within the space. As all of you know, this project will be occupied during construction, so that creates some unique challenges as far as scheduling.
Perfect. And then another thing that we've discussed, the annex buildings at Russell will remain in place throughout this school year, and it creates some challenges just to move students and parents and community, knowing that construction will be happening on essentially three different points of the building, but we still need to be able to access the modulators, the bus drop-off and parking. So again, kudos to the team, because I think they've come up with a well-refined plan in terms of how we'll move students and staff and community through the site as construction occurs.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thanks. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
And since this is information-only, if there's any public comment nonetheless? Seeing none. Well, thanks again for being here. And now we'll move on to item number 7A2, which is to authorize the resolution for the sale of elementary district bonds. This is an elementary action item. The administrative recommendation is that the trustees adopt Resolution 2017-14E in the form that's attached to the agenda, which authorizes the issuance and sale of a second series of up to $36,360,000 worth of elementary school building bonds. There's a rather lengthy background information. So Pat, I've known we've seen this as an information-only item in the past, just to make sure the trustees would be up to speed when we actually had to take action on it. So if you want to walk us through kind of the highlights of what we previously discussed.
You bet. And first, a correction. We identified the resolution as, as 2017-14E, and, and we are in fiscal year 2018. So I, the numbering is 2018-2E, and that was a correction we made to the, the final resolution, but if, if you could note that change. So as, as, as mentioned, we presented this, this resolution to the board last meeting as an information-only item. This is really the, the initiation of our bond sale, our second bond sale. Our first happened in January, February timeframe, 2017, 16, thank you. Yeah, we, yeah, 16. We initiated that process in the December timeframe, and, and here our target is a September sale. And what the bond resolution entails is authorizing the, the, the chairperson, the superintendent, myself, to execute certain documents, including the, the ultimate purchase and sale agreement within the parameters outlined within the resolution itself. And those parameters include the, the, the amount of the initial, or up to the amount of the, the, the sale, the, the underwriter discount, the interest rate, and additional terms of sale. The, the next step in the process will be for us to put together some, some information for DA Davidson, to put together a preliminary offering statement. We'll have a bond rating call with Moody's, and that rating is used then for the, for the ultimate issuance of the bonds. And, and so this is a, an effort really to take advantage of favorable interest rates. We did pretty well on our first issuance in 2016. And what we had estimated when we, when we were looking at a bond election was interest rates below 4%, about 3.75%, and we ended up about 2.5%. Rates have improved a little bit, so we're hoping to, to get under 3% again. That would be wonderful if we could. And I kind of ran some numbers and, and just, just to see what that meant for us. And, and it really works out if we can get in the, I averaged about 2.75%. If we can get there, then we're going to be spending about $500,000 less each district than what we estimated going in. So it would be great if, if we can get there, and we're going to rely upon Aaron to get us there. So I should point out that Aaron Rudio is here from DA Davidson. He's, he'll assist us with the, the sale of the bonds. The other benefit of going out is, is we can avoid some of the escalation costs associated with inflation. And what that means is, is Burley and the Halting folks have been pushing projects through and doing a great job of that, of managing those funds and managing projects. And, and so to the extent we can push projects through faster, we avoid some escalation costs. And that, that's a benefit to, to getting the, the furthest for our, for our dollar in terms of our projects and, and, and the bond issue that we, that we made in November of 2015. Long-winded. Aaron is, is here. He's available to answer questions from a more technical standpoint, if there are any, and so are Mark and I, if there are any questions.
Any questions for Pat or Aaron?
I have one, which I've asked at the last meeting, but just to reiterate, Montana, municipal bonds in Montana are, people are looking upon them favorably, because, as I mentioned at prior meetings, there are some states and territories that are defaulting on bonds at this point?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, I, I'm a little stunned. Mr. McHugh is hard to impress if he thinks your last interest rates were, were pretty good. But, yeah, in fact.
Pressure's on.
Yeah, no, it's interesting here with, with Montana bond issuers and schools specifically with the, the point that the, the chairperson raises, in that there are some borrowers of tax-exempt debt kind of throughout the country and, and Puerto Rico. I'm not quite sure how we want to count them, but folks that are having trouble paying their debt. And these are all kind of related debt instruments. And so good, secure bonds, like the, the district sold the last go-around, are really in demand, in spite of the fact that rates are so low and the stock market is, is doing so well. We're still having very good interest in, in bonds of Montana issuers. And there's been some larger ones than is typically the case over the last couple of years, yours notably. And Bozeman is about to do their high school issue here this week, and we've had very good demand for those. Can I address kind of interest rates and market rates, or are you trying to, trying to get moving on? So you've seen in the financial news that interest rates are, you know, the expectation is that interest rates are going to rise, and in fact, they have risen. You probably noted a couple of Federal Reserve increases in the federal funds rate. That usually makes the news. So that, that's kind of the environment we're in, but we're coming off of, of record-low interest rates, really. You know, I could almost draw a bullseye around your last sale and, and say you hit it, because if I go back 47 years, looking at the municipal market index, there's about four or five months where that index was lower than where you sold that first round. And it's why we really wanted to get out there quickly, was to get a good chunk of that locked in. There's some similarities to that with the resolution that's before the board today, the resolutions, in that rates are still low. They're not where they were back in, in 2016. But we would expect to be, you know, somewhere, I mean, if it was today, somewhere more like the 3%, 3.15, something like that. So when you combine those two, it's the bulk of the authority that voters voted on. It's going to really guarantee that costs are lower than what, what the district said they were going to be. Now, we're going to need to cross our fingers until we can get to that point. But the financial plan that staff came up with is working, and that the, the board directed staff to, to execute, is working in that you're, you're locking interest rates, maybe you're not ready to write checks all at once, but you're, you're giving taxpayers a better deal, hopefully, than what, what they expected when, when they went out. So, yeah, I thought that was interesting. Five months out of 47 years, and, and that's, you know, pretty good.
Any other questions for Aaron? Trustee Smith?
I've got probably a stupid question, but you guys know me. Pat, if we changed this to Resolution 2018, we don't have to change the name of the series 2018 Bonds, do we? Or is that era relevant?
That's a good question. No.
Sorry. I don't believe so. That's a good question, because the, the bonds will be issued in 2017.
Right.
Yeah. But the resolution, we just don't have to do this again. Yeah.
Not, not that I don't really like what Aaron just told us. Thank you for that, by the way.
Yeah. Thanks. Good question.
Any other questions for Pat or Aaron? Seeing none. Well, thanks for driving over. We appreciate you being here. And so is there a motion from an elementary trustee that the trustees adopt Resolution 2018-14E in the form that's attached?
Pardon? 2E. 20-18-2E.
2E. Okay. Not 14?
Not 14. Yeah, that was.
We start over.
Okay. So let me restate this. Is there a motion from a trustee that the trustees adopt Resolution 2018-2E in the form attached, which authorizes the issuance and sale of a second series of up to $36,360,000 worth of elementary school building bonds? Moved by Trustee Smith, seconded by Trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Then all elementary trustees in favor of adopting the motion, or the motion that adopts the resolution in the form attached, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all elementary trustees present. Then we move on to number three, which is to authorize the resolution for the sale of high school district bonds. Are we changing the number here as well?
We are, and it's 2018-2S.
And so the recommendation is that the trustees adopt Resolution 2018-2S in the form that's attached to the agenda, which authorizes the issuance and sale of a second series of bonds up to $47,215,000 for high school building bonds. Are there any questions for Pat or Aaron about this? Again, it has extensive background information, but I'm assuming it parallels most of what we've just discussed. Trustee Lorenzen?
Well, I had said this in the other one. It says, "Within the following limitations, the true interest cost shall not exceed 4%." Does that mean if something crazy happened with interest rates, we would hold off?
That's right. So the authorization would be within those parameters. Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, then is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-2S in the form that's attached to the agenda, which authorizes the issuance and sale of a second series of bonds up to $47,215,000 for high school building projects? Moved by Trustee Wake, seconded by Trustee Brinkstad. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of approving the motion to adopt Resolution 2018-2S, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to number four, which is to grant, the grant of title to Missoula College Building from U of M to Missoula County Public Schools. And so this is being presented at this point as an information-only item. And so Pat, if you, there is some background information, but if you wanted, you and, I guess, I don't know, Superintendent Thane needs to jump in on this one as well, but just to explain what we will be looking at in the future.
Essentially, this is just to provide the trustees with notice that we have, in fact, received a copy of the notarized executed quitclaim deed from the Montana University System conveying the Missoula College property back to Missoula County Public Schools. It's something that we've discussed previously, and that transition date is regarded as July 1. We have keys. We essentially have possession. So we're also taking on the burdens of maintenance of grounds and utilities, et cetera. As was discussed previously, we have from the IDIQ indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity list of approved architects, identified CTA, and they'll work with this on some of the deferred maintenance needs, as well as some remodeling that's necessary for us to occupy the space. And again, the intent would be to unify the business functions that are in this building, the administrative functions, including HR, central library, fine arts, the superintendent's office, gifted ed, Indian ed, all those that are in the administration building, all under one roof. And we'll intend to do that as soon as we can assess the facility and appropriate timelines for the work that's necessary, and put together a funding plan to make sure that we can complete that work. And as you'll recall, when you passed the resolutions regarding Senate Bill 307, we did build in some funding for the initial part of the planning phase and design elements on the Missoula College property. I don't know if there's anything to add, Pat?
That's great.
Thank you.
Any questions for Superintendent Thane? Trustee Decker?
Sorry, I just can't remember. Is it actually the high school or the elementary?
That's an excellent question. The property was originally a property that was owned by the high school district prior to unification. One of the discussions we've had is, right now, most of our district assets and our expenditures that are K-12 are split based on the enrollment distribution in the district. So right now, I believe we're using 60/40, or is it 55/45?
55/45.
55/45 as our split. So we will do some research with regard to how we want it titled, and appropriately distribute the asset that way between the two districts, since it will be used K-12 in all likelihood. So Pat's doing some background work on that for us, and if need be, we'll come to the board if we have to do any action on that.
Any other questions for Pat or Superintendent Thane? Seeing none. This is information-only, and any public comment? Seeing none. Then we move on to the addendum, which is 7A5, which is to authorize the superintendent to execute a deed restriction waiving the right to protest the creation of a special improvement district or rural special improvement district for the installation of a public sewer on the vocational agricultural center property located at 203637 South Avenue West. And this is why I'm glad I'm not a property attorney. So Pat, if you can, if you can explain what's going on, and there is a recommendation that we allow the superintendent, give superintendent authority to execute this deed restriction.
Yeah, happy to. And we're, we're very thankful for the engineering firms that we work with to walk us through these processes. And, and this is in compliance with Regulation 1 of the Missoula City County Health Department, which essentially sets forth the language in the deed restriction that, that we're asking the board to, to approve. And, and there are options for obtaining the septic permit to operate as we want to on the Voig property depends upon us signing the deed restriction per the Department of Missoula City Health Department. And so they're leaning heavily on their regulation, which we reviewed with, with our engineers, Jeff Smith and Mike Smith from WGM, and, and walked through that, that impact, and really see this as, as a requirement that we, at this point, aren't seeing a way around this deed restriction. And so we're looking at, at wanting to move forward, needing to, with the septic system approval, and, and are asking, we're asking the board to, to approve this deed restriction or authorize the, the superintendent to assign the deed restriction that does fit within the regulation. And, and we've added a little bit of language to make sure it reflects the regulation as it exists today, so that it's not modified down the road, that type of thing.
I would just add that, again, the recommendation is for authorization, and we are asking council to provide a final review before we make any agreement, which might bind the district to future obligations to connect to city sewer. I think one of the things that was an initial concern to us was what it really meant by having access to city sewer from the property, and how close to the property it needed to be, what kind of costs we might expect should we then be compelled to tie into the sewer system. And as Pat identified, we And as Pat identified, we attained a certain comfort level with the language that was added to the deed restriction, but we'll have a conversation with council. She actually just tried to call me a moment ago on my phone, before we actually execute any agreement.
Can you explain in layman's terms what this means? I mean, is this how the city stiff-arms people into putting in the sewer?
Essentially, what they're saying is they're charged with the responsibility to protect the groundwater, et cetera, in the community. And when city sewer does become available, they want to compel as many entities and users as possible to utilize the city sewer. However, in recognition that it's not available now, they certainly do need to consider approval of septic systems, and that's where we find ourselves. Sewer is not available at the present time in that area. I don't actually know where it terminates, but I expect that it would take quite an investment on the part of the city to extend it to that location. And then there are questions about how close to our actual facility it would be. I believe the engineers calculated right now that if the sewer line ran down South Avenue to provide access to the frontage of the property, it would still be 600 to 800 feet from the location of our site, which I believe is one of the, is outside the parameters of what would be required in order for us to hook up. So at that point in time, we would still be in control of making a decision whether or not we make an investment to run a line those 600 feet or more in order to connect. There's also some information, part of, another one of the parameters is that the cost for that connection could not exceed more than three times what we have invested in the septic system, and we anticipate the septic system to be in the neighborhood of $5,000. So if a connection to the city sewer exceeded $15,000, and if you're talking a 600 to 800-foot run, I would suggest that's probably a pretty good bet. That would also, again, mean that the ball's in our court to make a decision on whether or not we would make an expenditure of that nature.
What's the part about waiving the right to protest?
That's with regard if the city were to propose an SID in order to run the sewers out there. They're essentially saying, "We'll grant you the septic permit with the understanding that you would not protest an SID." The school district historically has not supported nor protested SIDs. We've just kind of regarded ourselves as being outside the fray and let the will of the rest of the community that's served by those SIDs make a determination of whether or not they move forward. So in my eyes, at this point in time, that's largely a moot point.
Any other questions? So I have just a question in terms of summary. So right now, there's no sewer running to the Voig Center, and there's the septic system currently in place? And the city wants some assurance that if sometime in the future, there would be a sewer running to Voig under the terms that you've described, that we have a deed restriction executed that says we won't protest, that they want to get a sewer to us? And so it's kind of binding on future action that we don't know might never take place, but at this point, in order to have some assurances from the city that we will at least consider hooking up to the public sewer system, they want this deed restriction waiving the right to protest?
I think that's correct within certain parameters.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I, and just to clarify, it's for the septic system that will be installed with the construction. There is an existing septic system there, but it was put, it was installed prior to the development of the Missoula municipal waste, the area that's defined for the sewer. So those would not be affected. It doesn't, you know, add anything new to it. It's just for new systems that are being put in within that municipal treatment system area. So it's just a one.
Any other questions before I entertain a motion? Seeing none, then is there a motion that the trustees grant the superintendent authority to execute a deed restriction necessary to obtain regulatory approval to construct the septic system at the Voig Center? Is there such a motion? Moved by Trustee Lorenzen. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Bragstad. Is there any board discussion? Sure.
You're going to bring the agreement back for us to read. Is that correct?
What we're asking is for authority to execute it. We're looking at the timelines associated with getting a building permit. The septic system approval would be necessary for us to get our building permit. Given that our next meeting is not until August 8th, we're asking for authority for me to make sure that our i's are dotted and t's are crossed and to sign it. We could certainly bring it back as an information item, but I would anticipate that it would be executed by that point in time.
That's fine. I have one more question.
That would be fine.
They won't grandfather that other, grandfather sin under that other septic system?
We won't lose the other septic system. This system is specific to the additions and the processing.
So the other septic system is for running the school, is that right?
I can clarify that, I think. Excuse me. We have, the new septic system is for the, it's for the processing education facility. There's no bathrooms associated with it, but we do need a septic system to dispose of the rinse water. There's a separate septic system for the bathrooms that are in the classroom parts of it, which is a different building, different system. We, it's a completely separate permit that we're getting. We can't add on to that permit if that's what you're asking, so.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, no, we can't.
They won't allow you to do it.
No, because what that would be is that would be an increased use, and that would put us right back into the same spot. I mean, we could, but then it would, they would include the both of them. No, it was a great, great question, actually, a great question, but we did look at that thing. Yep, you're always thinking, Anne. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other board comment? Any, oh, Trustee Smith?
I'm not gonna, I'm gonna vote on this one, because we don't, I don't think WGM has any impact one way or the other in the outcome of the vote.
Oops, any public comment? Seeing none, then we have a seconded motion before us, and so all those in favor of granting the superintendent the authority to execute a deed restriction necessary to obtain the regulatory approval to construct the septic system at the Voig Center, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Thank you. Now we move on to public comment at the end of the meeting. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items at the end of the meeting? Seeing none, then we're adjourned. Yay!
57 minutes. Michael, congratulations.